Good evening and welcome to the Old Colony School Committee meeting of Wednesday, May 19. My name is Aaron Polanski. I am the superintendent-director. And I would like to just take a quick moment to identify the folks in attendance. We have Jolene Costa, the secretary to the school committee and assistant to the superintendent-director; Mr. Don Foster from the town of Lakeville; Mr. Richard Demarche from the town of Metropoyset; Mrs. Nancy Souza from the town of Metropoyset; Mr. Steve Cassidy from the town of Metropoyset; Mr. Dave Hughes from the town of Rochester; Mr. Paul Darcy, student representative to the school committee; Mrs. Shirley Burke from the town of Rochester, the school committee chairperson. We'd like to offer a warm welcome to Mrs. Maureen Townsend from the town of Parker; we have Mrs. Joanne Pushfire from the town of Parker; Mrs. Evelyn Hulley from the town of McCushnet; Mr. Justin Broder from the town of McCushnet; Mr. Gary Mansfield from the town of Lakeville; and also online, we have Mr. Robert Marshall from the town of Lakeville. One moment as we meet some folks from the waiting room. This is Sharon Coos from the town of Rochester. Also in attendance, we have... Oh, Mo Saint-Amand, online from the town of McCushnet; Pat O'Neil, our director of technology; Mike Parker, our principal at Nutella, vocational coordinator. Online, we have Matt Train, our director of athletics; Chris Lefay, director of special services; Katie Tuchanari, academic coordinator. I believe we've accounted for everyone in attendance. At this point in time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our chairperson, Mrs. Shirley.
Thank you, Aaron. I would ask everybody to rise with the correct and pleasurable allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As our nation and our state begins to think about returning to whatever the new normal looks like, it would just like to spend a moment remembering what the last 15 months have brought us. It has been an inconvenience to some; it has been a disruption to many; and there is some that the landscape of their families and their lives are forever halted. Tonight, we remember in a special way, Mike Cassidy, class of 1986. As God welcomes Michael home, may we remember our responsibilities to his family and that we be there to support them and hold them dear. Thank you. Tonight is our farewell to Isabel Darcy, who I was telling her before the meeting, I wish we had another year with her and also that we could see what impact. I mean, she just, of all years, she has handled coming here. She continues to come, you know, without sometimes having the meetings, the student council meetings, the class meetings, all of that. And she's always gracious when she comes here. I just think, I don't know, I don't want you to repeat a grade, but I would love to thank you again. Isabel, thank you. Thank you for everything you've given us. And we wish you nothing but luck. There is a certificate, apparently different, but that's... A certificate of appreciation for you. And it just says, "Presented to Isabel Darcy with gratitude and appreciation for your service to the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School District Committee, May 19, 2020." Thank you. I'm going to let... Darcy will have for a moment later in the meeting when she does her final presentation to us. Any public participation? Hearing none. We move into our... This is our reorganization meeting. We acknowledge tonight, we have already welcomed Maureen. We also welcome back Mo Saint-Amand, Donald Foster, Nancy Souza, and myself. We have all re-upped for another term. Thank you, everybody, for willingness to serve. And I look forward to continuing, I'm sure we all do. You have the memberships from the three towns. And I will read the Massachusetts legislative action that binds us tonight. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16A. Committee: Selection of offices, duties of treasurer and assistant treasurer, temporary secretary, school building committee. The powers, duties, and liabilities of a regional school district shall be vested in and exercised by a regional district school committee organized in accordance with the agreement. The committee shall choose a chairman and vice chairman by ballot from its membership. The vice chairman shall, in the absence of the chairman, exercise the powers and perform the duties of said chairman. It shall appoint a secretary and a treasurer, who may be the same person but who need not be members of said committee. The treasurer shall receive and take charge of all money belonging to the district which shall have been approved by the committee. The committee may appoint an assistant treasurer, who need not be a member of the committee, who shall, in the absence of the treasurer, perform his duties and shall have the powers and be subject to the requirements and penalties applicable to him. The treasurer and the assistant treasurer may, by vote of said committee, to be compensated for their services, provided however that if said treasurer or assistant treasurer is a member of said committee, he shall not be compensated for his services. The treasurer and the assistant treasurer of said district shall be subject to the provisions of Section 3552 and 109A of chapter, to the extent applicable. If the office of the secretary is vacant, or if the secretary is absent or is unable to perform his/her duties because of disability, the committee shall appoint a temporary secretary to hold such office, exercise the powers, and perform the duties thereof until a secretary is duly appointed or the secretary who was disabled or absent resumes his/her duties. The committee shall appoint a school building committee, which shall have the powers and duties relative to the construction, reconstruction, remodeling, repair, expansion, or equipping of school buildings or facilities, as the committee determines. The committee may establish a subcommittee of no less than three members for the purpose of signing payroll warrants and accounts payable warrants to allow the release of checks, provided however that such subcommittee shall make available to the committee at the next meeting a record of such actions of such subcommittee. Currently upon the appointment and qualification of the members of the initial committee and annually thereafter, at the first regular meeting of the committee held in the month of May, the committee shall reorganize and choose by order a chairman and vice chairman from all its membership. Note, nominations do not require a second. A second is required to close nominations and two-thirds vote of the committee. The meeting back to Aaron. At this time, we would ask for a nomination.
Nominate Shirley Burke for chair.
Thank you for your nomination. The nomination is made by Mr. Robert Marshall. Second. At this point in time, are there any other nominations for the position of chair? Seeing there are none, we would like to conduct a vote. So for those in attendance, you could simply, if you're in favor, please raise your hand to identify that you are in favor of this nomination. It's unanimous in attendance. And for those at home, if you continue to raise your hand so we can do a visual scan. The vote is unanimous and carries. I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Shirley Burke. And thank you for her service. It's been nothing short of routine and perhaps hourly, if not by minute to minute at times. At times.
I would just like to reflect, Joe, that I'm going to abstain from that vote. Don?
I'd like to nominate Mr. David Hughes for vice chair if he's willing to accept the vote.
Are you willing to accept the role, David?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none. I'd like to conduct the vote. All those here in favor, signify by raising your hand. At home? Looks like it's unanimous. David, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
To position of secretary?
I'd like to nominate Jolene Costa.
Is there anybody crazy enough to want to nominate? I don't think I hear one, so I'm going to close that nomination. All those in favor of Jolene, continuing as our secretary? Anyone opposed? No opposition, Jolene. And Jolene is being recognized here tonight, unfortunately a month too late for Administrative Assistant Day, ill-prepared last month, what can I say? But, Joe, you know how important you are to us, so thank you. Treasurer? Christie Costa has held last year.
I nominate Christie Costa as treasurer.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All those for Christie returning as our treasurer? What can I question? Anybody opposed? Joe, I'm going to abstain from this one only because I know the family. And that it should not reflect on Chrissy, because Chrissy, I think, is an outstanding treasurer, but I would just assume not to submit a vote. Assistant treasurer. Colony being held by Evelyn.
I nominate Evan Boyne as assistant treasurer.
Any other nominations? Evelyn, for... I asked that, are you interested in returning?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of Evelyn? Anyone opposed? You have your slate of offices. The next meeting of the next national meeting will be May 18, 2022. The date of the next annual meeting will be Wednesday, May 18, 2022. Date, time, and place for regular meetings. Meetings are currently posted on an every-month basis and adjusted when necessary. The superintendent-director will prepare a form notice to the town clerks notifying them of the committee organization and shall forward these to the district committee secretary for signature and mailing to the clerks of each member town. The superintendent-director will also prepare necessary forms. The Massachusetts Department of Corporations and Taxation notifying the director of accounts of the committee organization and will forward this form to the district committee secretary for signature and mailing to the director of accounts. That ends our formal reorganization and we take up the regular business of the committee. I'm going to waive the reading of the consent agenda items as listed and request a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed. Second?
Take a motion, we accept it as proposed.
Second, the motion.
There is a motion by Mr. Hughes and a second by Mr. Foster. All those in favor, please signify by raising their hand. So I can agree that anyone opposed? Any objections? Routine matters. You all have the operating statements. There are, unfortunately, could not be with us tonight. If you have any questions, please feel free to forward them to her. The warrants are available. Don't know that we have any other routine matters, but under old business. Matt, I know is here, Matt Train, our athletic director. I was just hoping, Matt, that you could provide us with a fall-two overview now that the season has come to a close. How the season went, and I'm not talking wins or losses. I'm talking about how we adjusted to... I presented us how the kids found it, whether there was any issues with other schools, things like that, and what lessons we might have learned that we can implement in the spring season.
Happy to do so. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. And I do want to mention how much we appreciate the fact that the coaches and kids had the opportunity to play in the fall-two season. I thought it went fantastic, quite frankly. We asked them to do quite a bit. You referenced the modifications. The young ladies and men did a tremendous job on each and every day, checking in with QR codes and staying socially distant. We had a fairly productive, you know, season. And we won't talk about the wins and losses, as you mentioned. But they've done a great job. The coaches, you know, stepped up, did exactly what we asked them to do in reference to socially distant students, maintaining distance, requiring them to bring their own water, signing in through QR codes, maintaining, you know, specific bathroom areas. We ran the gamut, and I think it was extremely successful. The spring is already off to a very good start. The kids are happy, and it really has brought back some life to, I think, the building, quite frankly.
Matt, was there consistency throughout the May Foul Athletic Association with how things were handled? And...
Say it again, I'm sorry.
But Matt, was there consistency within the May Foul Athletic Conference?
I do feel that it wasn't unilateral across the board. I feel like most of us, most of us on the age, there were a number of schools that I think could have done a little bit better. That's for a conversation, I would imagine, at another time. But all of us, you know, on the vocational, I thought, did a tremendous job preparing the kids for play and, you know, putting our best foot forward on a basis. I apologize. Can you repeat that?
Not a problem. With the new MIA regulations as of yesterday, with, you know, the athletes not needing to use masks, I don't know what spectator requirements are going to be. Are you anticipating any issues moving forward with the spring season?
That's a great question, and I appreciate you asking it. As far as the modifications that came out, quite frankly, we had a feeling that they were coming. Didn't really catch us by surprise, but it did move a little faster than everything else that's come through committee work and in the state level. You know, we're still maintaining socially distant situations here, whether it be, you know, our students on the benches or in the dugouts. But you referenced the fans. As of right now, we're still following the same modification of two parents per student athlete from, you know, our home students as well as the visiting team. Just, I just think that at this point, I think that's the right movement. We should continue to walk slowly with this. Due to outdoor modifications, we are requiring them to stay socially distant. They do not have to wear masks outdoors. And typical of... Right now, I'm at the lacrosse game, and on the bleachers, you see little pockets of fans and parents, some with masks, some without, but nobody's on top of each other.
Any questions? I'm sorry, I dominated down. Is there any questions on Matt or on either fall?
There's a couple there. One thing I didn't like, he would sign all the members in every single game. He continued to do that, which was impressive. And he didn't say it, but he moved for every single volleyball practice and game. He moved 90 chairs by himself every day. Sometimes he'd get in trouble and help him. Good staff, good kids to play every time. Well, he went all the way up.
That surprises me. Anyone else? Matt, go enjoy the rest of the lacrosse.
I don't, I didn't catch... I'm sorry, I didn't catch everything Mike said. It did sound positive, so I'm gonna go with it.
Matt, before you leave...
And I apologize, I'm not having a good head... I'm not having a good head day.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Before you leave, I'm gonna jump in. The Markham Award is online. Just a little bit of the lacrosse game. So if we could, do you want to...
Yes. I'm sorry, Aaron. You were in and out. As you know, the Wi-Fi's not fantastic out here. But yes, we were delivered a few weeks ago our second Walter Day Markham Award for having the highest winning percentage in our respective 18-team division for the vocational athletics. So that's a credit to all of our coaches and kids and schools and administration, and I can't thank everybody enough.
Matt, we just want to congratulate you for your leadership as a part of athletics and activities. I want to thank you for being with us. You are responsible.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Club committee membership. We have the list in front of you. The subcommittees are presently formed. We need to take a few moments so that we can reorganize these subcommittees as well. Cover needs, I don't think that you'll have to remember soon. Those that may not. Okay, because there are some that are probably quiet right now. Looking at it. Negotiating, barring anything unsustained, should be quiet. Audit is typically quiet. Committee resource officer may be quiet. All right. Do we need to break out rooms?
For those that are still moving with your committee. Those that... The only committee, the only town that there's new members right now is, it appears to be Parker. So if we were to take a couple of minutes, if there are any towns that would like to be structured and then move back to visit, decisions may be... Because our, to Parker, we could do that. But why don't we take a two-minute break? And then we can come back, and if we're gonna hold where we're at, we can just say, "Hold," and then if we're gonna have any changes, we can talk about it.
How are we doing now with people who are still on...
I think we have people online for the town of Lakeville, McCushnet, and Rochester. If there are any changes that you feel would be necessitated, I think it would be in our best interest to probably just take time one time at a time. Hold by time.
So we can't break out rooms?
We wouldn't be able to as well. We can try. So why don't we just go by time when we resume?
Okay.
See if there's any changes. For those who are at home, if there are any changes that you would like to see to the subcommittee makeup, please message me in the chat, and I'll utilize that. If you're comfortable with how subcommittees are laid out, then what we'll do is you can just let us know when it comes time, and we'll resume as is. Does that feel comfortable for everyone? Super. Thank you.
Hey, we all comfortable?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad you're on. I'm just going to list the subcommittees and ask if there are any changes. We anticipate that we'll be hearing from Parker and Parker at some point. And just make sure that there's probably some committee assignments, if any. Any changes to admissions? Changes to budget? Who are you going to consider? Future planning? Who are you going to consider? Welcome to Old Colony, Maureen. Negotiating? I'm going to take the negotiating. Do audit, subcommittee? I'm going to take that. Building? Maureen. Evaluation? I'm going to give evaluation. Policy? I'm going to give policy. Insurance advisory? Maureen, give that. School resource officer? I'm going to give that. Information technology subcommittee? I'm going to give that. Did you not hear any changes from any of the other four towns? Is that correct? It is? The MAS C All-State School Committee is anticipating that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees will again select an all-state school committee comprised of one member from each of the association's divisions. A formal vote of school committee is required to nominate a district committee member for consideration.
Nominate Nancy Souza.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a nomination, but this motion will second by Mr. Hughes to nominate Nancy. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising their hand. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations. Alright. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees, voting delegate to the annual business meeting in the vogue 2021. In order for the school committee to have a vote at the annual business meeting of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, it is necessary that an official delegate be selected in pursuant to Article 9, Section 6 of the bylaws. That's wrong. All members of the association and all members of school committees, which are active members of the association, may attend and speak at any meeting of the association. Only active members shall be entitled to vote on the election of offices for any other matter as to which members of the association shall have the right to vote. Active member shall have one vote. No later than seven days prior to each meeting of the association, each active member shall, by written notice to the executive director, designate one of its members as its voting delegate and made by such notice, designate one of its members as an alternate voting delegate. All ballots and public votes cast by active member of any meeting of the association shall be cast by its voting delegate or if the delegate is absent by its alternate voting delegate. And if one shall have been designated, please note that this year's annual business meeting is to be announced. Recommended action, can I have nominations for appointing for Old Colony's official voting delegate?
I'll second.
Evelyn, are you interested?
I am.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of appointing Evelyn as Old Colony's official voting delegate signify by raising their hand? Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
We have, just for the record, I did go online as a voting delegate this past week. All ten resolutions passed every single line that we named for us. Including, actually, I tried to do it for years, but, um, getting rid of that. That passed. It was huge. Every vote. It was amazing. But it was eye-opening also at the time. By the way, I did it at the back with a laptop and the owners. It was really nice, you know, just to have a nice dinner like we normally have in college. In the olden, it was just in relaxed. So I tried to make it the best event I possibly could move forward on our behalf. Thank you. You're welcome.
So we have a nomination for an alternate voting delegate.
I nominate Nancy Souza.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have, and second, are there any of the nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of Nancy signify by raising your hand? All those opposed? Anyone abstaining? Nancy? Probably should have asked that before we voted.
Thank you.
I did the conference. Okay. Evelyn. Aaron, next, William P. Waugh, class of 2020, change of residency.
William P. Waugh.
Madam Chair, I'm having great difficulty. I heard almost nothing Evelyn said, and now I can't really hear Aaron very well either.
Oh, I apologize. I was using my quiet voice. I'm gonna transition to the podium voice. Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. I apologize. That was me and not you. William Piler is currently a junior. He'll be entering into his senior year next year. The family is aware that he'll be responsible for transportation from Old Colony, but he would like to finish his senior year at Old Colony, which means that we would basically be carrying the school without any type of tuition. And that requires a vote of the school committee, so I would ask for the support of the committee in allowing the student to complete his tenure at Old Colony during this year.
Good point.
Uh, yeah. Ordinarily, I would just snap my fingers and say, "Absolutely no problem." But Shirley or Aaron, please correct me if I'm wrong. Was it last year or the year before where one of these occurred and it messed up the, or it influenced the percentage of the assessments? Is that accurate? Do I remember that correctly?
There was a, there was a count that impacted, absolutely impacted a percentage of the assessment. I believe that the cost was defrayed amongst the towns.
Well, are you talking about the three students from within district who went to other chapter seventy-four?
I maybe. I don't remember it clearly.
There were three students that impacts it. This, as you said, is something we almost never give a long debate to because these are students that are senior year. It seems to improve them more than what their family life is already offered you by moving. Appreciate, Bob, your thought. If I'm not mistaken, all five towns will end up picking up a share of this student's cost of education. It is something that I think we would do regardless. You know, can I confirm that? With certainty, no. And that's something maybe going back if need be that Sarah might be able to address, but I don't know if others feel as though it's an issue. But, Bob.
Yeah, I, again, ordinarily, I would just say, "Absolutely no problem." But with money being as tight as it is and the state being as late with their numbers to us as they have become, I would like to have a firm answer on this before I'd be comfortable voting for it. What I'm thinking is, by saying yes to this, Lakeville or any town for that matter, could end up paying a percentage higher than what they otherwise would be assessed. And I would like to know the answer to that question for certain that it will not impact, certainly Lakeville, but any other town before I'd feel comfortable voting with it.
Well, I can't imagine that it will not impact because the five towns will have to pick up the cost of educating it. But that impact should be a very marginal impact to the overall statistics of the town because, again, we're talking one student.
Madam Chairman, I think we nominate the vote to accept that student to continue in here in his senior year. I think it's, personally, I think it's our duty to see that these students are taken care of. Well, he's been here three years. So I very strongly recommend that we approve this. I second Dave's vote.
We have a motion to move. There has been seconded. All those in favor of moving the article, is there any yes or no on the article? Just yes or no on moving it to a vote? Signify by raising your hand?
Yes, move it.
Is there anybody who wishes not to move it and to continue discussion?
I think technically you're supposed to have a motion and a second and then the discussion.
One more time, John?
Ordinarily, we make, we have a motion and then a second of the motion and then we discuss for the vote of the motion. So we takes us a little bit out of order.
So you know, we should be having a discussion on whether to move it?
Well, if we could roll the clock back, we should have had a motion and a second on the issues that we're discussing. And then discussed it and then a motion and then voted after the discussion. We take that out of order by starting with the discussion.
It was taken. We have, um, John's comments. Unfortunately, it was taken out of order. I will take responsibility for that. But we do have a motion and a second to move it. And I'm going to bring that to a vote. How we move? So again, I will ask if you're willing to, if you want to move the article or the vote, signify by raising your hand? Anyone opposed to moving it? Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Bob is abstaining. Okay, so we bring the recommended, if I could have a motion now?
Breaking motion, we recommend that this student continue on this over the senior year. I second Dave's vote.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Hughes, Mr. Foster. I could ask if there's any conversation in the initial? Hearing none. All those in favor of allowing the continued attendance of William Piler? If you do, raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Abstention.
Bob is abstaining. Motion moves. This Karen. Recommended action to approve a two percent increase for the whole colony and account professionals for the gap wide twenty-one school year to the page retro actively. And I have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve it. I'll second the motion.
Hearing a motion and a second, any discussion?
Can we afford it? Is it in the contract?
There is, not contract decisions. That's why it's being brought forward to us. The two percent is reflective of what everyone has received, all the contractual units.
We can, we can absolutely move it.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the voting may increase? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes. I believe there's an anticipated-
I have one.
Sorry?
I have a minute. The anticipated forty-eight dollars in advance is just in reference to a memorandum that was sent out by the Commissioner of Education yesterday. And it talks about offering vaccination clinics at schools. And I wanted to know what the desire of the school committee would be in terms of our offering a vaccination clinic here at Old Colony. If there is interest, you need to have a minimum of thirty-five people who can be vaccinated. And if the committee would like, I can look further into this. If the committee would rather, I abstain from doing so. I can follow the desire of whatever the recommendation may be.
Madam Chairman?
Karen?
I'll take it. I think it's an effective idea, particularly as a medical. You will be within a school. Good experience for that. Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't hear what we said. But, um, so far as, I'm concerned, I think we should stay out of it. Every town in our district is offering vaccines. You know, Rochester is offering now with the fire station. They changed it from the casual agent center to the fire station. So I think that we have our hands full here trying to run the school, have the school, and keep everybody at a safe distance. So I think that we should let the outlier communities handle their vaccine.
Any other comments? Or any thoughts? What had done?
It does raise a question if there's any financial or legal impact or risk the school to get this. And I'm not saying I'm for or against, I'm just sort of highlighting what might be a valid question to ask.
Any other questions that somebody could, could misspeak, like hearing school committees?
These are all very good questions. I think that the preliminary guidance came out. I have a lot more questions that would result, but before ever proceeding, I think it's really the purview of the school committee to direct me one way or another. And I felt, given especially what Mr. Foster articulated in terms of potential legal concerns or otherwise, those were the questions that came to my mind, which is why I think, based on the purview of the school committee, which is budget and policy, I felt most comfortable reading this to the whole committee.
Aaron, I have a question. Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Madam Chair.
Do you ever offer flu shots at the school? Have you in the past?
We have not.
Okay, then we'd probably fall in the same.
I don't believe we have in recent years. I should say that. Where I came from, we did offer flu shots. I can remember getting a flu shot at Bristol-Ivy. But in recent years, I don't remember offering flu shots. If I'm incorrect, please forgive me, but I don't remember in recent years. I think Nancy may recall in prior years that they have.
Okay, because I would just think of it along the same lines. If you've done flu shots, it would be the same cost, policy, procedure, that type of stuff. I know our school did last year do flu shots at our school. And I do, just to what was stated before by Mr. Hughes, I know that the fire department is offering shots this weekend as well, too, I think. I think this weekend. I'm not sure. But that's just a question I had.
That's a good analogy, Karen. I think that's a, that's a really reasonable way of looking at it. Is that powerful?
I'm just wondering, with the geography of the students, the towns, they're really spread out. I think I, David's comment about the towns are offering vaccines. Now it's even into a walk-in, so I mean, it's not as restricted as a couple of months ago when trying to make an appointment with the night man. But maybe that's, I'm thinking, I'm kind of going to, it may be best to, uh, leave it up to the towns. I don't know if you, Aaron, have received requests from parents, where to go, what to do?
Not really. Again, I just felt as though it wasn't a decision that I should be making independently of the committee. And so I wanted to just put it out to the committee. And I don't mean one way or another in terms of, you know, service provision. I think it's just a matter of whatever the committee would like to see happening, the direction that we could be.
Aaron, are we talking about outside staff, outside people coming in to, or somebody, some nurse?
Just, just local, and I don't even know who the department has identified as the actual provider. You know, it says, "Schools may use employer vaccination program for free onsite training for staff who's thirty-five or more individuals are encouraged to participate. Schools may also request a block of appointments at a mass vaccination site for staff. Further information is available on the website." Again, I'd have to do a little bit more investigation. This just came out. And I'd probably bring it to the committee. But I don't think, in terms of, we're not looking for things to do right now. We're certainly looking at the games.
Well, we're talking about within four years vaccination program. We're talking about students. And there's a big difference between an adult employee coming in and an underage child who is going to be the opposition. With their parent, you know, are we ready for that? Sure, great, but it's still, it's a known level that will be needed to follow up on, so.
Thank you. She had a, oh, this.
Again, I have to look further into the details. My thought is that this, I would guess, both, that the state would be providing some type of support in terms of what they're looking to do. But I think what their goal is, is to have as many people vaccinated in anticipation of a ballroom. But I think what their goal is, is to have as many people vaccinated in anticipation of a fall return. So they're looking to build capacity by utilizing schools perhaps and, and for service provision.
But, but again, the line of thinking of the state, that we're talking about this three to four weeks before school and there's no clear process here. Is this something that will, you know, to be doing in the summer? So, I mean, it's, it's probably worth asking the questions and just reviewing this book. We're going to be reviewing it next month, folks, it's already too late. Unless we're going to do, you know, a, a summer vaccination.
Well, if the committee would like, I can look at the detail, I can bring it to an administrative meeting, and I can just talk to the administrative team and see what it is. If it's heavy looking for us, then maybe we, we pass. Okay. Um, I think that by the time we get in, if we adopt this program, by the time we get into it, school's going to be out anyways. So we, I mean, you got another nine months, people can get back, and even in different towns. So I don't think we need to work, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Karen. I, I would think that the base point, if it was just a, a one district, you know, we were doing it for the students within one town. But, you know, just getting out here, there's sometimes needs to be, I mean, people can get it right from the town.
Well, the thing we need to remember as well, we're talking FISA, which is too short.
That's right.
You know, so we're invariably talking about something that may occur after school is done.
And, yeah, and we don't know, but it doesn't, doesn't.
Well, I'm assuming it was FISA, because they've only approved FISA for students, for students. Dawn, were you going to?
One thing, you may have down the road, September, October, somewhere, where you're going to have to have a booster shot. And they're probably trying to get people set up so that they're prepared to handle those booster shots. You're going to have to have another seven million people in Massachusetts or whatever is vaccinated again. And if they get more schools involved, they can take care of a segment of population that way. Because they won't have this done before school is done.
Is there anyone who feels strongly that Aaron should pursue this investigating?
I know. Maybe something that is going to be a period of time. And high schools, the state. Thinking when we have to, because it's bigger than the college.
Maybe what we should just talk about is letting Aaron flush it out a little.
Yep.
See if it's something that we should consider. Whoever wants point, if it's something that we might need to consider, it's a couple.
Maybe we could activate a monitoring hall. That's just an idea of, of rest or, but don't make us remind you, you want the advantage of. Find out if our school, if our school in town, because so every youth, the primary school, kids in primary school have a chance to get it at high school, we would go, so maybe that's a good option for our, our school to do.
If anybody on the school committee needs additional shots, I'll bring a bottle of Jack Daniels in the next week.
I just want to know if Jolene brought the desserts.
I have, I have. We're working on it. Nancy, your graduation is up, Karen.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes, Bob?
One, one quick thing. I don't know if this fits under anticipated on a 48 hours, but I, I sent you and Aaron an email just quickly. Something I'd like the entire committee to give some thought to. We've all been frustrated over, certainly this year, and maybe it was COVID related, maybe not. And in, I think, the previous year, and I think beyond that as well. Getting figures from the state on a very, at a very late point in the whole budget process. I would like us to think about and consider writing to our representatives to let them know that this has become more and more problematic and that we would like them to do more to prevent this from occurring. So if you would, just think about it, and Shirley and Aaron, maybe we can talk between now and our next meeting about putting it on the agenda for a discussion. I know Aaron, uh, through an email today, um, didn't think it would necessarily go on, but over the years, I've seen it get worse, but that's, that's my thought. Thank you.
I know one of the things I've asked Aaron about. Aaron does not know that, that I, it's a response to, to Bob, or to the point that Bob's made. I have asked Aaron to consider the possibility of having like a legislative breakfast. So that we, because we have five towns, we have multiple representatives, probably more than one state side of them. And I just kind of think it's, it's nice to bring them in at some point because we have a lot of things on our plate. That is one of them, more clearly, because I too have been frustrated, I continue to be frustrated by the give and take of I don't want to be that person who says back in the day, back in the day, you always used the governor's numbers. And that was always, you knew that was the minimum people get. Now we're just, you know, numbers come in, they come out, you don't know what to use, what not to use. But I think that point needs to be driven home. But there are other things as well, and primarily among them is our building project. You know, and maybe garnering the support of our legislators, state legislators, um, to get this project moving, to move us to that next phase. So it is something that I've asked Aaron if he would consider. I know obviously it's going to depend on the availability of our legislators, but your point is well taken, Bob, well taken. Anything else? Okay, sorry, I didn't hear that deal.
That's okay. I think you have the synopsis stuff. The evaluation subcommittee will be placed on page 12, for the superintendent's evaluation. Just want to make mention that this evaluation is done in better form. And it will also be placed on the open column website. So if any, any, anyone would like to, maybe you're into it. Because I'm not going to do too much detail here, or you all have the packet. So starting with even goals, uh, the first goal was a student rating goal. It dealt with identifying the lowest performing 25% of students and working with people in school to improve academic success, increase involvement in advanced, for extracurricular opportunities, leadership training. That was 33.3% score, felt that we exceeded, and 66.7% said we met that goal. The second goal was a professional practice goal. That was Aaron's work that he's doing to get the certificate in school management and leadership. 25% felt we exceeded, 33.3% met the goal, and 41.7% felt there was significant progress. Uh, the next three through six are district improvement goals. First one was the three towns issue that we had of joining the district. 33.43% felt we exceeded the goal, 58.3% met the goal, and 8.3% felt problem. The next district improvement goal was the Madison Park collaborative that they have with, with Madison Park. 25% felt we exceeded that goal. 58.43% met that goal, and 16.7% felt that significant progress. Uh, the next district improvement goal was at all academic vocational instructors will continue with the framework, review, assessment, unit alignment, used to be understanding by design now. 25% felt we exceeded, 50% felt met, and 25% felt we had significant progress. And the last district improvement goal was working with the director of technology, IT subcommittee policy subcommittee physical service networks, data center operations for the district. 8.3% felt we exceeded, 83.3% felt met the goal, and 8.3% had significant progress. Next was the four standards, understanding one, industrial leadership, excuse me, instructional leadership. 50% felt maybe 50% proficient. Uh, the second one, management and operations, 50% exemplary, 50% proficient. Standard number three, family engineering engagement, 50% exemplary, 50% proficient. Standard four, professional culture, 33.3% exemplary, 66.7% proficient. And overall, the summit overall rating was proficient. In the evaluation process, we asked about focal areas for Aaron to look at for next year's evaluation. Those are listed there. The subcommittee did work on and mentioned to discuss and added an additional one, focus areas, and that was to continue to assess and support the important work of diversity, equity, and inclusion training for staff students.
Go on.
It's a curious observation on the review of standards, that three of the four were 50% exemplary, only one of the four was 33%. And yet the summit of overall is 33. I would expect it, it's the overall to been 50% exemplary. Just a, just a curious observation.
We could discuss that.
Any other questions, any comments?
So as, as the chairperson of that subcommittee, are you saying that instead of the overall being proficient, like you felt that it should be exemplary? I understand that clearly.
I would have expected the summit to overall to have been 50/50 instead of 33/67. Because three of the four were 50/50. I just look at the numbers. I'm trying to interpret the numbers.
Well, we're just wanting to do an evaluation.
Right.
Aaron, I, I know you're, the figures.
I, I think the Likers scale were great. I think the comments directs action. And first and foremost, I want to thank the team of people who do my work. This is, Mike and I joked earlier, we use the words "we" in this district. We don't use the words "I". And when one of us says "I", I hope we have the, the occasion to remind one another that this is what we have. This work that was done is reflective of the team that's sitting here and online and in our hallways. It is not reflective of me as an individual, but rather of our school culture, of which I am so incredibly proud. The Likers scale has less to do with the direction that we will take. The commentary will guide our action. And the commentary from last year was included in the narrative of the evaluation. And each and every item that was identified by the school committee was addressed in 2020, 2021. And that's what I'm most proud of. And I don't think that we can get caught up in ratings so much. I think it's very important for us to be caught up in the direction that will best serve our students and their futures. And for that, I'm extremely proud, because we have a group of teachers, staff, administrators, in every facet of our school community that has dedicated themselves to this incredible effort. Uh, if you were to walk through, and Lauren and I talked about this because we sat together during, as we do with every new committee member. I said to her, you'll be very impressed when you sit in our school committee meetings, because it's a very cohesive unit of people. It's not that there's hesitation to disagree, because as you've seen tonight, there are a lot of different opinions that are thrown out. But the dialogue is always cohesive, constructive, and respectful. The same takes place in our school. We've tried to create a leader leader culture where people voice their opinions and have agency in decisions that are made. And for that reason, I'm grateful for these bullets in focal area three that will guide our action for the upcoming year. However, I want to articulate, this is not enrolling opportunity to offer that feedback. And for those who call me somewhat routinely, and there are members who call me routinely, you know I'll call you back within 24 hours, and you know that what you share, Bob's smiling, because yes, I've been talking to Bob. Um, but, but beyond Bob, I have conversations with other members of the committee on, on a relatively routine basis. And if you have a concern, it shouldn't be once a year that you have the opportunity to express a concern, a vision, an idea. It's an open door policy, and we're receptive as a team of administrators to help put policies into action. And they don't just come from a school committee. One of our big focal points that we'll talk about later in this meeting is student agency and the importance of student agency in driving a culture. Because we want our students to also have a voice in the direction of how we operate. So this is a very work intensive process. When I thought I'd be able to cut down to a few pages, I was unsuccessful in doing so. However, I want to express my gratitude to the people who took the time to read through the document, make corrections, cite ideas that I could have to bring clarification, because it's a live document. And if you looked at it on day one, I guarantee you that if you looked at it again on day five, the narrative that you looked at red would have been different. Uh, because there were people who, that called me requiring the things I couldn't include. So again, it's a group effort. Let's not get caught up in ratings, I said to Nancy. We'll list the proficients overall, and we'll list proficients in the subcategories. And I'm quite comfortable doing so. What's more important for me is that you articulate what you need from me so that I can work toward being the best I can possibly be. Uh, the follow-up document that is included here, the state of the institution. And I wanted to include that because that gives you an opportunity to truly differentiate the work that is being done, hear the voices of the people behind the scene. Each subsection was written by a member of the administrative team. And I want to thank them for the work that they put into the state of the institution document, because it brings clarity to each of our roles. And again, while I'm uncomfortable for everything, I'm not responsible in terms of frontline work. I don't do that frontline work the way we do. And I'm grateful to be surrounded by such an incredible team. Uh, so this was a wee effort. I'm proud of the other one, and I thank you for your input.
Any other questions for everyone, Nancy, or Aaron?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Bob?
Uh, just to follow up on what Aaron mentioned, um, and I know it's the next item on our agenda, the state of the institution. I found, uh, the input from all of the members of the administrative team to be very helpful in clarifying many things for me. Uh, with respect to something else that Aaron mentioned. I, I felt I had to call him during the, uh, uh, my doing the evaluation because I was unclear as to how the, um, the meetings with, um, I'm sorry, Aaron, what's the name of the school in, in Boston?
Madison Park.
Madison Park. I was unclear how or if at all that. I was unclear how or if at all that was able to take place. And when I spoke to Aaron, he told me, and if it was in his narrative, I missed it, he told me that they actually had ten virtual meetings. And as was pointed out in our evaluation subcommittee meeting, you know, yes, those were virtual versus in-person, and what's going to be done to try to, you know, make them more in-person and so forth. If I had not called Aaron, I would have given him a lesser grade, I think, than what I did give him in that particular category. So it's very helpful. And the input from the other members of the team, I also found very helpful. Thank you.
And Sharon made, you know, just to build off of that, Sharon made a really good point, you know, during the evaluation subcommittee meeting where she said, you know, just for clarification so that no one is misled, in the absence of being able to meet with our large groups at Madison Park, we sought out a joint leadership program that we ended up having fully funded by Pegasus Springs Collaborative. And it included ten students from our school and ten students from Madison Park who met with regularity on a monthly basis. But what we're, what our goal is, is not to, and Sharon made this point, we're not trying to target specific students. We're trying to target larger, larger parts of each population. And that, in the midst of the pandemic, was extremely challenging. So while we're quite proud of our pivot, Sharon made the very valid point, and I'd like to thank her for her feedback because I think, again, in the spirit of very genuine feedback, she made the point, and it's the last bullet around diversity, equity, and inclusion. This, we want this to be a cultural piece across our culture. We don't want this to be a small faction of people. We want to take those ten students and expand our capacity by using student voice to now carry that message forward. So again, the questions that come up allow for clarity of conversation and clearer direction moving forward. So, Bob, thank you for offering that, for asking the question, for also bringing it up in the evaluation. Sharon?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to add that Nancy was also very instrumental in, in, you know, finding ways to expand on that one area. So definitely a team effort, and we're just going to continue working on that across
All right. Isabel, to you.
So I just wanted to discuss all the events going forward within the next week and two weeks leading up to graduation for seniors. So this week is our last week of academic events, and next week is our last week of shop. And we sign out on Friday morning, the May 20th. And after that, we will be going, we will be signing out by shop, so we're all socially distanced, we head out to the field. And then we're going to be having a cookout. And all of the food and the ice cream was donated from my 143 barber and the Bitter Street family, which was very generous of them, and we appreciate it. And then, Bob, on that, the following week, we have our senior banquet at Bitter Street Farms, and that will be from five to nine on Tuesday, the first. And then, Sunday morning, on the 10 a.m., we will have our commencement ceremony in the field, and the seniors will be completing their career at Oklahoma. And I know I have enjoyed my careers, and I'm sure all of the rest of the seniors have. And it was a great experience, and I learned way more at a vocational school than I could have ever imagined, and it was such a great experience. And being on this committee was also a great experience for me, just learning and just observing. And everyone's like respectfulness and learning how to dispute things respectfully and care about others' opinions and not just dominate with your own, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Good.
Just a couple of things. One of the things that seems, that seems we'll do on the day of this time now. The pergola we have out here, and we have a banner that says, Class of 21, we go across the first room, we go across the top, and they're going to sign, because we go all four letters over the pergola. That'll be there for the year, the next year will be main, and the class of 22 will be extended, extended to the year. Also, senior practice is going to be put on, on the daily practice, which is being promoted by the Oklahoma College. Now, personally, I want to thank Isabel for what she's done, and also the fact that graduation is a little short this year because she is not only the, you know, a tall candidate, she's also the class president, who will be one of us.
I made a decision about school. I'm going to break live for operations. My team is minor.
Make all.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Graduate.
From the administration, I already mentioned some of the state of the institution, but I'm pretty cool.
I'll just do a, I'll add a quick ad lib piece to the state of the institution, and that is that just this past weekend, we did testing for the class of 2025. And when the students were done with their placement testing, we presented each of our freshmen with a sweatshirt. And they had a photograph of the backdrop, and we called it signing day. The response from the families of incoming students was absolutely phenomenal. And anytime that we can build connection prior to a student walking through the front doors, that they feel more part of our community, I think it's a huge success. Because we're not in the business of taking ages from a textbook and planting them in the minds of students. We're in the business of creating the whole person, teaching empathy, teaching skillsets that will allow students to be successful beyond the classroom. And I, I feel this is very much tied to the state of the institution because it's a piece of our ecosystem we are. And I think that the team of people at the helm exemplify that vision, and I just want to reiterate my gratitude for the time because it was a beautiful thing to see over the weekend when teachers weren't even scheduled to be here and weren't being paid showed up just to be a part of these festivities. Literally said, I'll do this, and I'll do this, and I'll take the picture, and I'll... And these people weren't being paid on their weekend day, just came in out of the goodness of their heart, their compassion about the future of Oklahoma. And it's a testament to group. And I left on a high because of the test. I can read this comment.
Any comments on the state of the institution report? Okay. I have one, or maybe two. Can we hold on to something else?
Sure.
I, I, just like the state of Oklahoma or the state of the institution is not long in process. But I want to know, is this posted?
No.
Why not?
Yet. Not yet. It's not posted yet, but I, I can tell you that we'd be happy to post it. But I think in fairness to the committee, they deserve to see it before it's posted.
Not questioning that whatsoever. This, this is, I enjoyed reading this, okay? You use the words that I had in mind, in that I love the concept of all the leadership teams identifying themselves and then bringing something to it because it lends voice. I could hear them, I could hear them, I could hear it. And one of, it's the commonalities that are in here that resonate to someone when they hear it from multiple people. And I just think that this, I don't like the state of the institution, but I just, I just think this needs to be shared, and it should be posted for a parent of an eighth grader who's thinking about it. You know, a parent of a junior who wants to, okay, what's really going on? And I like the fact that it is, by all appearances, a very honest statement in that there are drawbacks here as well. This is what we need to work on, this is what we need to do, this is where we need to go. It's an identification of who we are, where we are, and what can we do better on. I just, I, I just totally enjoyed it. And my very first question was whether this was going to be posted, because I just feel as though it's a bad omen for the document.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Paul.
Ditto what you said.
Thank you, guys. Okay. The rest from the administration.
Non-resident tuition rates have been set for the upcoming school year. The non-resident tuition rate for 2021, 2022, that's a typo on the error, is eighteen thousand sixty-seven dollars, and these are two hundred and seventy-nine dollar students from last year. Four of our five member towns have approved our FY20 budget, which means that we do have an official budget. Final vote is anticipated to take place at the Rochester Town Meeting on May 24th. And all conversations with the town of Rochester will be indicative of a vote affirmative for that, but we will anticipate the result. And that will take place on the day of 24th. Isabel Darcy did a beautiful job of providing an overview of activities at the end of the year. I think Mr. Parker also added to that. Did receive guidance, updates for graduation from the state as recently as today at 3:00. So our graduation ceremonies will be much more like the old traditional graduation ceremonies and much less like last year. And that's for our students. They've given us permission to allow students to sit closer to one another. They've given us permission to allow families to sit in a socially-distanced manner, but we do not need to be the conductors of that. We need to share the message and create a framework for that. But in fairness to our students, we would like to conduct the ceremony to be acceptable to bring back loyalty and allow them the celebration that they deserve. So that is the anticipated piece that we will communicate through a district-wide letter that I'll be preparing tomorrow for the folks of sending it out either on Thursday evening or Friday day. Another piece is I will be providing testimony at the Board of Education Meeting on May 25th. We had a Mava sorium today where we talked about new admissions guidelines, and I was asked if I would provide testimony, to which I agreed, but that will be at the Board of Education Meeting again on the 25th of May. And other exciting news would be that we were contacted by EAS to be part of a collaborative capstone project focused on student voice, and will be participating with three other schools at the current time, one of the public in Finland, a private school from Arlington, Connecticut, and Nittmuck Regional High School, and then Upton. Coincidentally, when Mike started as our principal, I gave him contact information for those folks because I feel as though they're a very progressive district. It was very exciting to see that listed on this document, and it was very exciting for us to be considered progressive in our own right and to have received invitation to participate in this program via. Mike and I were part of a meeting that took place last week. Yes, I lose track of days. Yeah, last week with the other three schools. One thought that came to mind is the lack of representation of a junior city school in the neighborhood. I would have went when we were sitting together, but before we bring the idea up to EAS, we want to talk with our corrupt at Madison Park on Friday morning, although I'm not feeling comfortable with our statement of thought that maybe they could do it in the program. But we do have a meeting at night ready Friday morning with Madison Park, further planned for our collaborative on a larger scale for the individual. Those are most of my updates that came to the intended. The last piece I didn't have there, I think.
No, we're playing the usual way. We like to take compliments of our other people's parents. People can see you at home. Well, thank you, everyone. Firstly, the newsletters in there. So last week's look of the year, we have some pretty neat things in there, especially the bike outside of Colony, featuring one of our students who's kind of an entrepreneur, and four members of our staff, one musician. It's a pretty neat thing to take a look at. That concludes that for the year. I was thinking next year for the light outside of Colony, I could shoot a scorecard at this. I'm going to just say to you guys, if you want to do that, get to know each other. I want to talk about students first of all. These kids over this course of this last fifteen months have been unbelievable. This year, in person, they're like, this is the usual, you know, they wore their masks, they were troopers. They were, it was unbelievable. When the seniors, you know, came back, it was another uplift for all the kids. I thought, haven't already graduated, that seems so. So it's nice, they're on co-op, you never get to see them. This group, they get back, immediately fuse into the school and do what they're supposed to do. So I can't say enough about all the students. And the staff, you know, you look at the vocational staff who've been in the front lines here all through the, you know, the pandemic, they've been unbelievable, they continue to do that. And then I think the forgotten group is also the academic staff because trying to learn is a team for low. I, I, I think I would have just got out of teaching, I would have taken that. They're amazing. And then when they came back in the building, it took a lot of things, they learned, incorporated that into their lessons, and it was like seamless. I can't say enough about that. And Aaron talks about our team, our team is unbelievable. Katie and Belle, I don't know how many schedules have you guys agreed for this whole pandemic? And then also recovering back on April 26th, new schedules. And we haven't had a chance to get a schedule for next year. They usually do that, they make, it's just amazing what's been going on. So I just, I just have to say those things. I know you guys appreciate everything that we may do, but I just want to say those things. So thank you for the time.
Anything else? Next meeting date is June 16th. I would, just on.
Any further word on what the state expects us to do with admissions and change, global change, provision policy for the whole country?
It's a good question, Ron. I don't think that admission will impact us in as significant a way as it will some other districts. One of the things that is very interesting about Oklahoma is that the representation of our attachment area is very much reflected in our involvement. That is not the case in every school throughout the commonwealth for many reasons. Maybe that the book can add a little bit to this. Has a lot of access issues. They don't have the opportunity to enter into the new Bedford School the way we do our sending districts. When we call our sending districts in a non-COVID time and ask for the opportunity to present to our sending district students, we're welcomed with open arms, with regularity. And the rapport that we have with our sending districts is such that it's a true partnership. I think that there have been massive improvements for Uh, I think that there have been massive improvements, uh, for, uh, schools like Greater New Bedford over time. But it's taken them a significant amount of time to take small strides. Uh, the other piece is that a lot of what has been identified in admission policies, we already have in place. So I'm not so sure that we'll have to make any modifications to our policy. However, I will say, we continue to have an access issue. Justin spoke about this in the evaluation. We have an issue where we still have 300 applications for 150 spots. And until we're allowed to expand access at Old Colony, we cannot service the number of students. Who would like vocational education. Take God your peace. And that's problematic to me. And we've talked at great length, talked about the need for. Identification of chapter 74 programs to coincide with expansion of the building project. Uh, coordination with the labor market analysis. So these pieces of the puzzle, hopefully will all come together. But when I speak at the Board of Education, it won't just be on behalf of O'Callaghan. It will be on behalf of all of the MABA school. And what a change in admission policy means for all of the MABA schools, not this whole colony. One of the things they're asking, yeah, uh, policies be submitted for approval to school committees and to, uh. The Department of Education on an annual basis. A lot of people feel as though to do that annually needs a ton of work. For the Board of, for the Department of Education, but probably unnecessary work. If a policy isn't broken, uh, for localized. So there were some suggestions made in today's meeting where we'll make that presentation to the state. And hope that there'll be a level of collaboration as well.
Can you say policy? Just talking. Admissions, admissions.
No, just admissions.
What do you think the Commonwealth might, uh, try and implement a new policy statewide?
I don't know that it will be a uniform policy statewide. I think one of the things that we need to contemplate is the impacts of a uniform policy as opposed to. Policies that are meeting the needs of each respective district, right? So I'm not sure if uniformity is the answer. I think that they're more focused on whether or not your student population is representative of the districts. Who you serve. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Well.
They're trying to decide off the lottery.
So we've done some, Lou Lopes is a computer genius for those who may not know Lou. Uh, Lou served on search committee because he had, uh, four life insurance companies. He has a daughter who graduated from here. Uh, she's. Done phenomenally, just graduated from college for those people who remember Savannah. Uh, she's an absolute superstar. She just graduated from Stone Hill, I believe, last weekend. Uh, but Lou did some simulation on what the impact of the lottery would be. And in this simulation, it did not solve the problem that the state was looking at. Nor do we think that the lottery would necessarily solve the problem. As a matter of fact. Our special education population under O'Callaghan is much higher than those persons in district. That being said, it could put students who are special education students at a true disadvantage. If you run a simulation, it results in a lower number for those students because our academics are aligned to level. An A is an A, is an F. There's a misconception by many people who are not familiar with our admission policy. That a student might get a higher grade than they can earn on this class. And a student can be in a substantially separate classroom and get an F. And that A is the same as an A in an honors level class. So it's very important for us to recognize the current, um. Or, or the predisposition for people to think that something may be, uh, lacking in terms of. Equality when in actuality, uh, we've found ways to address some of the concerns. Have seen a great amount of success. Where. Much of our success is also due to the fact that we come from a very homogeneous. Catchment area, right? Let's just be real in the way we talk about that. Where. We're dealing with towns that are very light in many respects. Not every school, sort of, not every regional vocational school, services, towns that are all very light in terms of the quality. Does that make sense?
Anything else? Julie, do you need to go who's attending graduation?
Yeah.
And so, all right, we will, we'll be sending out. So they're going to request. There is nothing else. Do you have a turn? Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Night, everybody.
Good luck.